This is a public forum for the meeting board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for what stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We have a local law tonight. Don, you want to read the notices?
There'll be a public hearing held on Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P. M. Regarding local law number five, the two thousand and twenty-three, a law, a local law amending chapter one sixty-nine, zoning of the Menand Village Code by adding Schedule Four frontage types and local law number six, the two thousand and twenty-three, a local law amending those codes by repealing chapters thirty planned development districts, chapter one hundred gasoline stations, chapter one forty site plan review, and chapter eight one seventy-two site plan review regulations. All encouraged to attend, be common, or be present for comments or do writings to Clerk Tannerham by noon of May fifteenth.
Matt, you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
You want to start us off?
Sure, you guys can hear me okay? Yep, okay. All right, so I'll just give a quick introduction to both of these local laws. We went through this at the last meeting. But local law number five is just adding Schedule Four, the frontage types into the zoning code. That was accidentally left out when the full law was adopted. So as I mentioned before, any, any time that I spend on, on this, we will not build, build a village. So that's just the frontage types and that's specific to the Broadway Business District and the T-four and T-five zoning districts. So it provides visual guidance on, on the different types of frontages. And did you want me to just quick overview of local law number six as well?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so this one is just the part of the, what's going to be an ongoing recodification process for the village, the, the full village code. So as Don had mentioned in, in the summary of the public hearing notice, we had combined all of these different chapters, chapter thirty, one hundred, one forty, and eight, one seventy-two into the new zoning law. And so therefore, these, these chapters no, are no longer relevant and will just be repealed completely from the village code. Because everything that's in, in those chapters right now are, are now addressed in chapter one sixty-nine zoning. So neither of these local laws changed, modify in any way, any of the existing regulations. The frontage types, those are already regulated. This is just to provide the, the visual reference that was left out. And then the recodification is just removing these, these chapters which are no longer relevant.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions? Yes.
Well, comments, all right.
About this?
About both of these laws that's been mentioned. Now, I do support local laws five and six that I, and I agree. They need to be updated, upreformed, modernized. So both, so I support both of those local laws, five and six, and making more local laws more efficient. So when you, when you approve of both of those local laws at the regular meeting, which will be pretty soon, I urge every village board member, please approve of the, both of those local laws, five and six. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Phil.
You're welcome.
All right, and Matt, we're not, we're waiting on something from the county, right? So we're not moving back on this tonight?
Right, yeah, well, we'll look to adopt probably at the, your second meeting in, in June. Which, which is fine, because again, these, these are just cleaning things up. This is not going to impact any, any project that's currently under review. So we'll just, you can close the public hearing and then we'll wait on the, any comments from the county, but I don't expect them to be, to be any, any issues from them.
Good, good question. Steve, do they need to be read out at this meeting for the public hearing, or?
No, I think what John read was, was sufficient. And I assume a copy of the, the local laws are available in the clerk's office.
Yes, they've, they've been posted, they've been on the website, and they've been posted in the usual places.
Yep, that's sufficient for, for notice purposes, Tim.
Thank you. Uh, Matt, just one thing, when you're in the email today, you had the nineteenth, the next board meeting is going to be the twenty-sixth because of our election and the nineteenth is the June holiday.
Okay, oh, that's right. So that'll be the fourth Monday, then?
Yeah, just for this, just for this month, just because of the election and the, the holiday.
Right, okay. Yeah, that, that, that's fine. Not a problem.
All right. That's all you have for tonight, I think, right?
Yes, so I'll sign off. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right. We will close the public hearing. It is six o'clock. Open forum?
Two things. I'm glad to hear that the former Bethany Presbyterian Church has already been sold to some private property owner, which he will turn that former Presbyterian Church into a residential house. Nothing. While walking down South Lions Avenue, I observed one lawn sign blocking one fire hydrant on east side of Lions Avenue near the south end of that village street. I reported to the Menand Police about it, and a few days later, that lawn sign was removed from the fire hydrant. Nothing can be blocked from fire hydrants. I'm also glad to hear that two short bleachers near the guest dugout, well, it was near the dugout, but it moved to a different section of the Menand Lily Baseball Section, and I'm glad that those bleachers got repaired, which needed to be done so badly. Now, since Karen Stewart was painting the outside of two dugouts, so I helped her, I steadied the ladder for her because I did not want, wish for her to liable fall down, liable to get injured. And I helped her carry the ladder. So she was painting the dugout twice, though not the colors that I desired, but that's all right. I'm glad they got repainted, which I had requested it. And I'm glad to see that Raroan Avenue has recently been renamed Station Street by, which I had requested renaming Raroan Avenue to a different name, even though not the names that I wanted it, but that's all right. I'm glad it's been renamed. And since, now, I urge our village to approve and support, you know, this grant dealing with E. V. Electrics charging stations for, for our village. Now, I do have questions. How many, how much money will this E. V. Electric station charge is going to be, do you know?
The grant is for thirty, thirty-two thousand for four E. V. Stations, and we've already been approved for it, so.
I know. All right. And how many charging stations will the village get for, for, all right? Now, since I've been requesting that the outside part, well, the whole restroom building, Menand Lily Baseball Section, get sandblasted, primed and repainted, plus replaced the doors. Now, I'm glad to hear that the restroom building at Menand Lily Baseball Section will be repaired this, during this summer, which I had requested, and I'm glad to hear it. And I'd also like to thank the village board that they passed local law number four, two thousand and twenty-three, dealing with imposition utility, utility gross, gross, receipt tax. And I'd like to thank our board for doing passes important. Look, look, you've done the right thing, and I appreciate it. All right, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm done for now.
All right, thank you, Doc.
You're welcome.
Okay, I was, I was curious about this methadone clinic that's coming out, and I believe that everybody on board received an email from me last week. Is that correct?
I did, yes.
Okay, and I've yet to receive a response from anyone except trustee Lane. Does anyone else intend to respond to me?
Well, we were told by the clerk that he told you there was a public forum on the twenty-fourth or the twenty-sixth, so you had that information, which is why I did not respond.
Okay, that does not tell me where you all stand on this. So can I get a sense of who's on board and who's not?
We haven't taken a stand on it because it is an matter that's come before us. This is not, nothing to do with the village. It has to do with the state.
Well, how did it get this far without any kind of a public notice or a public hearing?
Wasn't required.
They applied for a building permit.
Were you aware of it?
After they, after they got their building permit.
Then why did you not request a public hearing? We have a public hearing coming up next week.
Exactly.
We could have had one.
It's, it's an information session. It's not a hearing.
Okay, why was this?
In my point of view, this isn't as contradictory as you and Tim and others have made of it. It's a clinic. It's not a walk-in clinic. It's a doctor's office per se, where people that are trying to recover, get off of their drugs that they're on, will go by appointment only.
Mayor, how, how many, how many doctors' clinics by appointment have sixty seats in the waiting room?
These are questions you can ask them next week. I don't have the specific answers to that.
Okay.
We spoke of this last week. We let everybody know the public forum is going to be next week. So any questions you have, you can ask directly of the people that have the exact answers.
Okay, now, my concern is this. Time is not on our side because this has been in motion for some time. Maybe I was asleep at the wheel. I don't know. But I wasn't aware of any notification of this. So here we are at a point where the community is about to have a methadone clinic that's going to have, what, four hundred addicts coming into?
How do you know that?
Where do you get this information from? Because of the stuff that you've read in the letter? You know, you know what? I'm going to stop right now, actually, because any of these questions and all these innuendos can be answered next week when you speak to the people that are involved in this.
Okay, so you're, so you two are on board, right?
You know what, Chuck? You know the reason why I'm not opposed to this is because I know firsthand ten people that either were friends of my children or friends, children of my friends that have died from drug addiction. And if they had the opportunity to go to one of these walk-in, or these clinics that is going to be offered down in Menand, maybe their families wouldn't be suffering this way.
Or maybe if that clinic was located three miles down the road, an industrial area.
Anywhere but here. Menand isn't good enough for this.
You don't have the ability to make that decision.
Well, I think we do.
No, the village has to go by the code.
Well, I think if the board was to take a stand against.
You asked for a response. Now I'm responding.
Okay.
May I respond?
Please do.
The village must follow the law. That is what guides everything that we must do. It determines how high your fence can be. It determines where you can put up a garage. It determines everything about building. The village must follow the law. Otherwise, we will be sued. That parcel is zoned a medical, for medical offices.
Is that, does that include?
Yes, it does. And you can go ask the state.
Oh, I've got a FOIL request in. I'm asking the state.
The state, that is a medical office provided by a medical doctor in a medical setting with nurses and bills medical insurance. That sure sounds like a medical office to me.
You know what it sounds like to me? Sounds like a methadone clinic.
Well, you can call it whatever you want. Doesn't mean that that's what it is.
How about you two? Are you on board?
We don't have the information. I'm looking forward to hearing what's presented to us.
That's the point of that meeting, is to get information. You've made your decision. So the point of that guy coming and explaining anything to you or to several people who have been spreading misinformation is, is obviously.
Maybe you're spreading misinformation.
I'm not spreading any information.
You're telling me you don't know anything about it. You're waiting to hear from this guy.
We are.
Which is it?
We're waiting to hear from him.
Okay.
What I know is a lot of what has been spread out there, for instance, on your website, is absolutely incorrect.
You send me, tell you what, maybe you should have responded to my note.
I don't need to do anything. It's not my clinic.
And you can tell me what's incorrect.
What I know is the law. The law said it's a medical office. The law says that that is zoned for medical offices. It could just as well be a Planned Parenthood, okay? I'm sure there's a lot of people who would be objection, have objection to that as well. The law is the law.
I don't think that having pregnant women in the neighborhood is a threat.
Is that really the way you're going to go with that?
That's absolutely the way I'm going to go with that. Okay, I, I've got a sense, I've got a sense.
No, you, you don't have a sense of anything because you're taking your own personal opinions on this. You're spreading them out there on seniors' websites or seniors' Facebook pages. You built up this huge extravagant webpage for yourself, and you haven't even.
I haven't done it for myself, Mayor. I've done it for the community. I'm looking out for the citizens of this community. I don't know that you are.
Whatever. I'm waiting to talk to this guy and let everybody get their answers directly from them and from the people that know what they're talking about, not ones that are just spreading gossip.
All right, if there's some gossip or misinformation that's on that website, let me know. We'll, we'll address it.
You can put out, you have freedom of information. You have the right to publish misinformation all you want. It's the first, it's the first, your First Amendment right.
No, it's not.
So we'll see if the meeting's going to come to the meeting.
Of course I will.
Good, good. That will clear up a lot for everybody.
Anybody else? Yep.
I don't want to talk about this, though. Do we have to talk about this, or?
No, this conversation has concluded.
Okay. So obviously, I've missed a lot of meetings. Anyway, I just want to talk about death and destruction, not methadone labs. I want to get back to the train situation. I know there's new people on the board, and I was a big advocate for getting a quiet zone and making the railroad coming to compliance with speed coming down the tracks, especially those park, in so much as we set up cameras and we're measuring deflection on the tracks. So I wanted to also say that at that time, the board had decided to do, my biggest fear is I've lived here, here five generations, then I must be four generations. Four generations here on that side of the tracks where we're locked in by the gate that's at the top of Menand Road, for which there's an emergency plan in place that went through when the county was doing their big plan when they were talking about moving heavy oil down the tracks. So they're not doing heavy oil, but they're still moving the same products, which is phenol and all types of toxic chemicals on those trains. At the time, you can see what happened in Ohio recently. So there are all new neighbors in our neighborhood up there on the block, which is wonderful. Lots of children, new families. But they don't know about the escape plan. And there hasn't been any practice for the escape plan for three years. I think it's been three years. So I don't know if anyone's aware of that, but we have an escape plan for those of us that are trapped up there and can't get in.
Yeah, so that's a good point. It's time to revisit that, have another thing like we did before when we all ended up down at school.
Yeah, and the path is still livable.
Yep, it is.
If it's not, then it needs to get addressed and then just letting everybody up there know what the new plan is for the tracks. I don't know whose qualities to call the railroad to, but I can tell you right now, just sitting here the other day, I had a stop sign on Villa Road when a heavy came down. Of course, they're still moving too fast. They're still exceeding the speed limit at certain times of the day. But that deflection, does everyone know what I mean by deflection? It's the rate that the, the rail moves up and down as the weight hits it. And so where it meets the paved road, you know, the pavement going across and crossing, that deflection right now is, I think it can't be greater than seven inches, but we're pretty close to that when that weight is hitting that. That track is going downhill and that train is lifting up to get through that crossing. So it needs, someone needs to call the railroad and put them on notice to come in and, and observe the trains as they're going by, you know, pulling all the cars, because the deflection there is, it's, it's greater than it had been. They had gone, when we were yelling and screaming, they had come in and rebuilt a lot, a good portion of that section coming from the three seventy-eight bridge down, but it's settled and it's drained and it's moved. So they need to come and, and do an assessment of both of the crossings coming through our, our living space, if they could. So one phone call should do it, if they're serious about their safety plans and rules. So that was the first thing. Can I have more than one question?
Sure.
Can we talk about light pollution in the neighborhood and about the daylight lights that everyone has installed in their houses now? Because I think everyone's worried about invasion of the body snatchers or something. But is there a code or any kind of rules or anything about the type of light bulbs people can put and keep on twenty-four, you know, at night, walking through the neighborhood? Is there any type of zoning or anybody have a conversation about the light pollution? It used to be so nice to walk through the neighborhood in the evening with the soft streetlights that we have. Thank God we have them. We're not changing them out anytime soon, right? For those.
They're not, they are. We're changing them to L. E. D., but they're not going to be.
When? Can I get mine taken out in front of the house? Because those daylight lights?
They're not, they're not going to be, they're, they're the same wattage and everything.
I don't care about wattage. I care about the soft white.
It's going to be the same, whatever's there now will be.
Bright light, and then there's daylight.
Yeah, that's going to.
So you're saying it's going to be soft light?
That's what we, we told them to keep them the same way they are, with the same wattages and everything.
I would like to vote to get ours taken out from in front of our house. So.
You have to talk to National Drive.
That's National Drive.
They can move it down. They can go anywhere they want with it, but it's there now. So, and in addition, people are leaving their lights on at night in their backyards. And now that it's, I mean, is there any rules or anything about that?
Not to my knowledge. I don't, I've never heard of it.
Has anyone walked around the town at night lately?
My, my next door neighbor has that, so I ended up having to buy blackout curtains. I mean, I asked them to turn off, or turn off the light at night. They said, no, that's, they exit and enter the house from the back, so they want that on. So nothing I can do about that.
Or timers.
What?
Motion detect, motion detection.
But it's, no, it's when you walk.
Yeah, but I mean, like when I'm trying to sleep, going in my, my window, but, and I, so again, I asked them, but there was nothing I could, I could do. I wish.
It's a real issue.
Yeah.
It really ruins it.
Yeah, I agree. I, again, I, I wish, wish there was something I could do.
What do they do with the streetlights?
That's a good question. The gentleman, the gentleman that I've been talking to is out on medical leave. So I've actually talked to a different person today, and they're still working on it.
Good. Good. Just saying now the light.
Yeah.
And so I understand there is a changing of the guard, so I just wanted to thank Mayor May. And is, is it Ms. Foley that's also stepping in? Because I had, the word was it was Seth, and then Seth's staying, and Ms. Foley's leaving. Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. One more thing. About the Presbyterian Church, that's all. So are they, has anything gone through zoning yet? That all has to get, go the same process that the other couple wanted to do as far as opening a daycare center.
She's making it residential. It's zoned for that, so she wouldn't have to go through the zoning board.
Residential multifamily?
I don't think multifamily. I haven't, I've heard single family.
Well, no, I don't think it'd be zoned for that.
It's a residential, right?
No, I mean multifamily, not.
Oh, yeah.
We heard multifamily.
Oh, that's, I don't know. That's not what I heard.
She could go, she could, she could, she could apply to Z. B. A. For a zoning, perhaps.
Right, but it has to be in.
Residential.
Sorry.
Very appropriate song.
Thank you. So she can go for a variance for multifamily, but she has to go through the same process the couple did when they had to, wanted to use it for a different use, because it's literally changing the use from a single-family residential to a multifamily.
If it is that, that's not.
If it is that, right. I heard, you know, like you said, lots of.
All right. Don, two spelling errors on the meeting minutes. Take the five out of the letter.
Okay.
And Robleski is W. R. O. B. L. E. W. S. K. I. We need a motion to approve the May first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
War and number twenty-four, general, sixty-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Water, four thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars fifty-five cents. Sewer, three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, totaling sixty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Payroll number twenty-four, ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Would you have transfers? From the court, what, court full-time to court part-time overtime, one thousand dollars. Contractual services, twenty-eight hundred dollars, twenty-six hundred dollars to payroll services and two hundred dollars to court part-time overtime. Lieutenant, seven thousand six hundred, six hundred dollars. Five thousand nine hundred dollars to OT for the police, four hundred dollars to DWI patrol, three hundred dollars to uniform allowance, and one thousand to the vehicle maintenance. Eight hundred dollars from holiday to telecommuter overtime, eight hundred dollars. Communications repair, six hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty dollars. This is in the fire department. Four hundred and fifty to miscellaneous, two hundred dollars to gas and oil from street, one thousand dollars, the supplies, one thousand dollars. Personal services, seven hundred dollars, economic opportunity, seven hundred dollars. Volunteer firemen, workers' comp, twenty-one, two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred dollars personnel services, to five hundred and twenty-five to employee, the village employees, workers' comp. And other employee benefits, compensated absences, one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the water fund, four thousand from the contingency account, the four thousand power and light, and those are your.
Make a motion.
All favor.
And the treasurer is also asking a transfer from the, the mend the budget for the requested repairs of Rescue Sex that was approved at the four, three, four, three, twenty-three board meeting from, to increase the count to sixteen thousand dollars to cover the costs of their.
So what you're saying is that, we said, sort of, but it went up a little.
No, 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 it's, we approved it, we approved the transfer of the money.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. I'll make a motion.
All favor.
What was that amount?
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
All right, the next two on the agenda are being tabled until June twenty-sixth meeting. And we have that.
Okay. We have, I was asked, Mike and I were asked to get quotes for the, to add additional outlets into the park. I got four different quotes. The first one was from Casman Electric, and theirs quote was for three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Warner Brothers was forty-six thou, forty, four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Jurassic Twins, four thousand nine hundred dollars for Slice Electric, five thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
And it's not just install new outlets. Some, one of them had Bs in it. It burned out. The other one by the pole, one pole keeps shorting out because it's not.
It's direct, it's direct wired right in.
Right, and the other one by the tent cord is a direct wire.
Yeah.
So they have to be replaced.
Okay.
Don, how much goes Jurassic?
Forty-nine hundred dollars.
Since Casman is local and then a little better, I'd approve them for thirty-nine twenty-five.
All favor.
All right.
I bet Warner Brothers wasn't lower than you could have said. That's all folks.
There you go.
Truck three for DPW, the medium-sized dump truck. Was it, was that they're having a hard time starting it, so they went to have, have a look at by the repair shop? And while they're doing it, they found that three of the six cylinders have low compression and the, they found metal fragments in the, in the oil. So they, the mechanic there recommended that they replace the engine at a cost of nearly four thou, forty thousand dollars. The problem.
What, what, where's the metal flakes coming from? What is, how do they explain that?
Pistons and stuff. It's just metal flakes that.
What, what year is this vehicle?
Two thousand eleven. It's, it's twelve years old. And so that was.
The other one's a two thousand.
It's talking to Mike and Bill. Mike needs a truck, but is, is it really worth, as Bill has a, has a real hard time with spending forty thousand dollars on a truck that's twelve years old that's going to be in your retirement age.
I don't disagree.
The problem is, there is a problem, though. We're talking to Mike. When they went to, they, to get a new dump truck, it's like two years out. So I don't know. If we go out the bit for a new truck, we could, we may be able to find something that's sooner, but this is just from what they heard from them. But he uses this truck for his, like, for the salt thing, for the, the winter.
Can we see if there's anything on the gently-used option sites?
I was going to say, so many surpassing vehicles.
Auctions on a national one, AAA one and whatever, you know, like.
We have, we have one that we use. That's what we sell ourselves. I mean, I, I just, Mike doesn't, Mike doesn't care either way, but he really needs a truck.
You're right. This, I mean, this isn't like a lack of maintenance type thing. Is this, I mean.
They, they, they take them to be serviced. They, because they, they, they take them to be serviced when, you know, Mike's got a rotation where he gets them rotate, gets them, the oil changed, and.
Mike said that's our, that's our most used trucks, truck.
That truck, if, if the truck is, you know, it's, every time it's, every time this water main breaks, it makes ten or twelve trips down to the back and forth with either stone or, and they also use it for the, uh, when they do the paintings, when they fill pot holes and stuff, and they, it's, it's used, that's their most used truck.
And the new truck would be four thousand?
No, it's probably, it's around a hundred and fifty.
Oh, hundred, hundred.
But this one, when we bought this one at ninety-eight, it was ninety-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, I would have guessed, but, I was going to say like.
It's because it's not like the big ones where we, you know, even the big ones was, was less than two hundred, you know, the cloud trucks that we bought.
No idea. Well, let's check on the auction sites, see if there's anything there.
And then I'd like to also see what the residual is.
Yes.
I mean, that would be, that, is it still drivable now?
No, because you can't, it won't, if they're having, if, it took like.
It's a blow, uh.
The blowtorch won't even.
Like, uh, what was it, what's, what are they blowing to start it up, like to ignite it? Either, either. There you go. That doesn't sound too dangerous.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't good.
Um, we'll also see when we're at NICOM, if there's anyone that has a gently-used, uh, truck, as you said, that might be looking to sell it, and if so, you know, maybe I'll drive it home from there.
Yeah. I should be in Buffalo.
Yeah, that would be my luck, then you can drive me out there, so, I'll pick it up, road trip.
Alright, um, we've got an email today from Thirty-Five Broadway regarding the, um, Soldier On Project. They were awarded their nine percent credits this past round, so there, it looks like their construction financing will be in October. That project is going to be moving forward, so that's exciting news, we've been waiting on that for, I don't know.
Five years.
Five years, is it that one? Um, so, that's exciting news.
They, they presented, I remember, via Google Meet at the very beginning of the pandemic, and it wasn't even brand new then, so. That was three years ago.
Um, so what, um, will they wait until financing, like till October?
October.
Before they do anything?
We'll expect to close on financing October.
Okay, so they would break ground after that?
I would lose.
Okay. That's, that's great.
They, they already inquired, they thought about, I mean, for site plan.
Okay.
See, as they had four years to work on it.
Right, hopefully have it all ready to go, I, that, that would be good.
Anybody else?
The matter's for the eagle.
Yep. And make a motion, somebody goes to executive session for two legal matters?
I think, second.
Have a night, everyone.
See you, Bill.
Nick?
That was fun. Make sure you get back to me on that misinformation, so we can get that cleared up.
I'll get right on it.